Nothing really substantially successful beyond the big brands like GM and Ford that have been traditionally been unionized for many, many years.
Starbucks announced that all of its hourly workers in the U.S. will make at least $15 an hour. This comes at this time with these union talks. How else is the company trying to respond to the unionization efforts?
Well, it looks like that the initial efforts were to really put a focus on these stores, trying to figure out if there were things that the workers were upset about. There were reports of high-level management, including the president of Starbucks North America, coming to visit and paying attention to the workers, listening to the workers, trying to figure out what's going on. I think there's an image of the president cleaning up, mopping a floor. So to kind of show not only that they're interested in what's going on, but also that they're all part of the same team and they all want to work together to make Starbucks a better place. So some of the more unusual things are having high-level managers come, not just for like a quick drive-by, but I believe one of the logs for one of the stores had the president coming seven times, which I think that's pretty unusual for someone, again, who's in charge of 9,000 stores in the United States and also stores in Canada, to spend so much time at one location is pretty unusual.
So all of this is happening now, but previous union campaigns within Starbucks have failed in the past. In one instance, two baristas in Philadelphia were fired for trying to unionize. I bring this up because I'm talking about the way that the company is responding to these calls for unionization. Does this speak to how hard it is to actually start a union within Starbucks?
It's really hard to start a union at any big company these days, particularly in the service industry. There are a lot of tools that companies can use to sway employees. You know, some are illegal, right? Firing a worker because they're in support of a union is definitely illegal. And the National Labor Relations Board has the authority to order those workers to get back pay and be rehired by the company. But there are a lot of legal tools as well, including closed-door meetings, explain to the workers why management thinks that it's a bad idea to join the union, how it will change the environment at the company. And Starbucks in particular has, I think, tried to cultivate an image of a very progressive company, one that is more worker-oriented, more worker-friendly. There have been some benefits, including educational benefits and healthcare benefits that are a little unusual in the industry. Starbucks calls its employees partners. I think those efforts are designed to try and make employees feel like they're all part of the same team or same family, and by doing so discourage, you know, bringing in quote-unquote outsiders that the union would represent.
I mean, to be more explicit about this, though, The New York Times reported that Starbucks increased staff and shut down stores for training. They've also sent in support managers from out of state. Starbucks has denied that all of this has anything to do with counteracting union efforts, but are they trying to work against workers who want a union?
Yeah, that's the interesting thing. I mean, ultimately, it should be up to the workers to decide whether they want to be represented by a union. It's really their choice because their relationship is with the union, and then the union then would have a relationship with the employer in representing those employees. But it's really been cast as kind of, instead of voting yes or no for the union, you're voting for the union or you're voting for the company. And the company kind of wants to kind of cast it that way because I think most workers, you know, even though they may complain about their jobs on a day-to-day basis, I think a lot of workers are proud of where they work, they want to do a good job, and they want to see themselves as part of a larger group that's working towards, you know, some higher purpose, even if that's really good coffee, right? So the kind of claim that you're being disloyal or the kind of indication that you're not part of the team if you want to bring in a union, I think, can be very effective in kind of dissuading some employees in that instance. Now, as you mentioned, some of the things they've done, including bringing in high-level management, staffing up stores, I think there was one report that there were like nine baristas behind the bar of a very, not very crowded Starbucks one morning, closing two stores. Now, the company has reallocated those workers from those stores to other places, but anytime you actually close one of the units that is petitioning to have a union there, that definitely raises red flags for me as a former NLRB attorney and someone who, you know, works in this area. That was surprising, along with those high-level managers coming and that, as you mentioned, the huge increase in staffing at some of the stores.
That's Matthew Bodie, professor of law at St. Louis University. Matthew, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong in Washington, D.C.
I'm Robin Young in Boston. This is Here and Now. Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and Aspiration, a digital banking alternative designed for people who care about the environment. Customers can plant a tree with every swipe. aspiration.com/green. Aspiration Financial LLC.
Last year, when the U.S. economy shut down, why did the stock market soar?
Because the Fed, in March of 2020, drew trillions into the markets, thinking that that was the way to prevent catastrophe. And the markets, of course, took the money and ran. That's what they do.
I'm Egnath Chakravarti. We'll look at why the Federal Reserve is an engine of American inequality. That's on the next On Point.
Tune into On Point, weekday evenings at 7:00 on Radio IQ.
Support for Radio IQ comes from Dominion Risk Advisors. This past year's biggest takeaway is that risk is inevitable. Dominion Risk Advisors helps businesses manage risk. D-O-M-RISK.com. And the Tiger washes owned by Tiger Fuel Company.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan Record, please call the row.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
The best speeches absent today. Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. In accordance, President. This afternoon, we will be blessed to have our invocation delivered by Bishop Jamal Jackson, pastor of Refreshing Church. And following Bishop Jackson, I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. So please stand as Pastor Jackson.
Father, here we are once again. We ask your blessings upon the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. I would ask that you would help them as leaders, not to ask first, "How do we fix this?", but "What do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen?" Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders but also servants. It is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, the color of our skin, nor the status of our economics, that this is our city, and that throughout the ages, prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, and those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, and those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak about or out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and respectfully when it is our time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the spirit of community, the spirit of justice, and the spirit of love, most importantly, by your spirit, which is holy. This we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, that we hold sacred and holy, and all who would do good and right and true. May it be so. Amen.
Amen.
The third allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much, Jamal. Welcome, everybody, to our second session of Roanoke City Council. Today's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursday at 7:00 PM and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. Announcements. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. The Fair Housing Board, one vacancy. Roanoke Civic Center Commission, one vacancy. The Roanoke Cultural Endowment Board of Directors, one vacancy. The Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, two vacancies. The Roanoke Regional Greenway Commission, two vacancies. The Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee, one vacancy. Tour and Advisory Board, one vacancy, which will be a citizen-at-large. For any of these vacancies, you can access the city's homepage to complete an online application for any of them. And let me just encourage those of you here and those of you that are watching through RV TV that we, as a council, want you to come forward and serve on these boards and committees. It's important, and our philosophy is to have citizens to be a part of the process, to help us govern this Southern time, all-American city. So you can either call in to the clerk's office or go online to fill out an application. It's a very simple and quick process. The council is accepting nominations for the 2021 Citizen of the Year. And forms are also available online at www.roanokeva.goven/sixonsoftheyear. So, and in the city clerk's office. So you can go online and submit a name that you feel should be recognized as a Citizen of the Year. Or if you have any questions, problem, contact that clerk's office, and they will make sure that you have the information that you need to make your nomination. And it's very important to us because we want to recognize citizens that do work in this community to make it better, to enhance the quality of life for any and all of our citizens. So it's an important position, and we do recognize that person. So please avail yourself and make that nomination. And the deadline is Friday, this Friday, November 5th, at 5:00 PM. So do it before the deadline, and we'll make sure your nomination gets considered by this council. That is so important for us. All right. We're now going down to item number two, which is the presentations and acknowledgement. And I'm pleased to call on Councilmember Joe Cobb to make any presentations and acknowledgements or a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Sharon Moore and some of her team members from Elite Business Strategies. We are partnering with them as our consultants to help the city conduct our youth and gang violence community assessment. And I wanted you to have a chance to meet them and hear briefly from them. I believe all of council has a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, and it's also up on the screen. So, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Sharon, and then I'll let her introduce her team and give a brief presentation to us on their efforts.
Thank you, Councilman. And while I know Sharon, she and I worked together before here, and it's good to see each of you. All right? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary. Thank you, everybody, and all the members of the council. Thank you for having us here today. Again, we are with Elite Business Strategies. Again, my name is Sharon Moore. I'm the Business Development Officer for the company, and I want to introduce you to the team members, including myself, who will be assisting with the assessment. Here is, on my left, is Gifredo Granger, and on my right is Greg McLean, and also Vernon Tillage. He's also a part of our team, and our program manager, Nicole Holton. And our CEO is Princess Ausley. So we're excited to serve the great city of Roanoke in partnership with the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. The purpose of our meeting with you all today is to let you know a little bit about the Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment process. This assessment will contribute significantly to the continued development of our city's comprehensive gun, gang violence, I'm sorry, reduction framework. So we can jump right into our presentation here. A little bit about us. We are a minority-woman-owned enterprise established in 2011. We are certified as 8A and MWBE. Our services include emergency planning, disaster recovery, hazardous mitigation, and our team members have led over 80 presidential-declared disasters. Here are a few of our team members. Princess Ausley is our CEO, again, Nicole Holton, and the rest of the team members we have already mentioned here today. Okay, and also, the initiative team members include Joe Cobb, City Councilmember and Gun Violence Prevention Commission Chair, Angie O'Brien, grant project director and chief strategy officer, Chris Roberts, which is the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator, and the Gun Violence Prevention Commission members. Our community assessment timeline is as follows. We have already started our kickoff meeting, which was great, which started on the 29th, and we are currently in the data collection and research phase, which will be from November 1st through the 6th. Here, we'll schedule meetings and interviews. And our Phase 1 is where we are talking with our community partners, where we'll be identifying, also communicating, engaging, and assessing. We've already reached out to over 135 community partners in this phase. The next phase is scheduling meetings and interviews with the providers. Right now, the providers have a copy of the survey, which they are providing feedback on that survey. They're making comments and recommendations toward us, and industry-specific recommendation based on their individual programs. November 8th through 3/11, we have the survey dissemination. That's where it will go out into the community. This is also the development and implementation phase. Our development implementation phase consists of our approach to communicate and provide outreach. That's the part where we will drive development and implementation of the plan to assist the city of Roanoke in reaching vulnerable communities that are most impacted by gang violence. November 22nd through December 1st is our survey response, and December 15th is our assessment report, and then our final report will be available. I know that this is time-sensitive, as we are, we have, we do also have a deadline, and our closeout goal is to focus on the completion and the promotion, also efficiency and effectiveness. In addition, the completion of our efforts, we can support the city of Roanoke with our after-action and improvement planning process. So how will we disseminate? So we have a digital program that we, and a platform that we are going to be using. The surveys, the great part about the surveys is that they are available in multiple languages. They are easily accessible on your tablets, your cell phones, your computer devices. And the surveys are specific to our target audience. Again, we have scheduled meetings and will also provide interview and outreach opportunities. We have already made connections with the schools, but we also will be talking to department heads, and we have already received great responses from the youth service providers that we've reached out to. The questionnaire, again, will capture the data. They are community-specific, and we have already scheduled existing community and school, I'm sorry, and we want to schedule and connect with existing community events, reaching out to community partners such as community influencers and church leaders as well, and small businesses, which is very important. This is just an example of what the survey looks like. Again, it's easy to use, very easy to follow, and we will be able to capture the data once they're able to give their input. Some parts of the survey are not just standard, concrete answers, but they can actually type in their answers and their responses. And we are asking for input from our partners again. We talked about the survey dissemination and our outreach opportunities, and of course, we will provide our recommendations. And we also, for those that have not had the opportunity to set their appointments, are scheduled, you can schedule your meetings and interview times for assessment with Jasmine Tolliver, and once you've scheduled your time with her, we'll be able to reach out to you and identify those outreach opportunities. We will be using all types of strategies, so if you guys have any input, please forward that over to us as well, and we definitely want to have a good time doing this and making sure that we have the best possible outcome for our city. And these are the additional contacts. Our information is provided in the emails that we sent out, and they're made available here as well.
Thank you, Sharon. Let me ask you, at the culmination of all this, what is it that we're presenting, that you're presenting to us, and how is this to help us to go forward with Roanoke gang violence in our city?
I'm going to defer that question to Mr. Cobb.
Well, I think from EBS's standpoint as a consultant, one of the things they'll do is, once they, we haven't really had this kind of a comprehensive assessment, if ever, on these particular issues. So they're not only looking at data that we already have from different sources, but really centering youth and family voices in this, who are maybe experiencing this firsthand, and what insights they have for us. So they'll be providing us a comprehensive assessment report, and then they'll attach some recommended actions out of that. But the reason that we're doing this assessment in the first place is that the General Assembly a year ago passed legislation for seven localities, including Roanoke, that were seeing an increase in gang activity and violence, to do this type of assessment. And then they allotted funding in last year's budget cycle, and we received a grant to allow us to do this. And once this assessment is completed, it will help the Department of Criminal Justice Services carry forward their plan to go to the General Assembly and say, "Based on these assessments that we have from all of these communities, we want you to not only continue to advocate legislatively for violence reduction efforts, but also to continue to fund these violence reduction programs throughout the state." So it's, there's the local impact of what we'll receive from this assessment, and then there's the state impact that will hopefully allow for funding to continue to reduce gun violence around the state and in Roanoke.
All right. Have you all done this before for other cities?
Yes, and Mr. McLean here, he's our, he's definitely an expert on that. He can give you a little background of what he's done as well.
Well, I've worked with several youth gang members and associations in Dallas, my home state, Michigan. I'm with the prison ministry. I've done a lot of that type of work. And after we do the assessment, we put it together, and we give you eradicating gangs, that's down that road, okay? But at least you get a process, you get a starting point to see if you have a gang problem, how bad it is, and which direction you should go as a city, as well as what you take to the state. You have enough information to try to get you a resolution to your problem. And we're here to do that. We go places that a lot of people don't want to go, and we go there because we know that's the heart of the problem.
Let me ask you just a question. Are there any cities in the country that have gang issues? Have they ever been eradicated, as you know of?
Well, that word eradicated, I used it because it's almost useless, okay? But what we can do is, we try to put things in a situation in any state in the country, and I just talk to any city in the country. You have to put in perspective that you got to recognize it, that there is a problem, and you have to figure out a way to lessen it and live with what's left. That's all you can really do. Gangs have been around since three people got together, tried to figure out, do something wrong. So with that being said, we're going to do the best we can to give you the information you need. We're going to dig deep, and we're going to give you the information you need, and hopefully you can come up with a way to use what we give you. And that's what we try to do.
Well, I appreciate that. The reason I asked the question is because many of my colleagues are mayors, and I talk to them, and it's a problem countrywide. And when you're there ready to eradicate them, I say, "Well, what area has done that? I want to know." Because it's an issue that's thrown in the sack that's causing other problems. You know, those cities that have made decisions about vaccinations and whether you get them or not, and they're caught up in the middle of trying to decide, should they make the decision to say, "All frontline law enforcement people, many citizens, employees, get vaccinated." But what's, another problem is, people are walking out, and I say all of this to say they're concerned about the gang issue, because a lot of cities have just been inundated with gang and gang violence, and it seems like it's getting worse than better. And it's not a Roanoke problem. As I've said before, it's a societal issue we've gotten lately. That's tremendous, and each night I watch the news, CNN, sometimes Fox guy, just to see the different perspectives. But it's something that we need to do, and thank you all for your commitment to doing this, and, but I'm just having difficulty seeing the outcomes. It seems like it's issues that just continue to exacerbate itself, and it's affecting so many of us. So I wish you well on what you're doing.
Thank you.
But, you know, as a mayor, I constantly get, "What's the bottom line, Mr. Mayor? When are you going to allow me to go back out on my porch and sit at night and not worry about gang violence, or not worry about somebody coming by now and just shooting up in the air eight or nine times, anytime?" And so I'm supporting anything that you need to do, and Councilman Cobb has done, and his committee has done yeoman work here. has done, and his committee has done yeoman work here. But I'm just, you know, it just frustrates me. It frustrates me anytime we have it, and I'm not tripping all of the gun violence we have, the gang problem, but we had three straight days of gun violence. Three straight days. When I first started this business back some 20 years ago, you didn't hear that. You may get one every now and then, and all of a sudden, a Saturday night special. But now, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And it's tough. It is tough on, on cities, and fortunately, we haven't got to the point, as other cities have, where they have to make drastic decisions. But I can see that coming. I can see that coming, and I'm hoping that you all can intervene, and the Department of Criminal Justice Service can get going. It's a slow process, you've got to do it, because I know it's slow, and anytime you get into bureaucracy, it's going to take some time, because you've got people to talk it out, and some people may not feel it's a priority. And right now, tomorrow, we're going to change government for one reason or another. It's going to be a new government in this city tomorrow, I mean, in this state tomorrow. One party or another is going to change there, and I'm hoping that those things doesn't change. But I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you. But I'm just, as many other governing bodies are, are really frustrated with gun violence.
Absolutely.
And we're going to be doing what we're going to do. We're not stopping, we're not, we're going to keep working. But I just want you to know how I feel about the importance of this and what we've got to do. So, thank you all for your service. Be safe out there in what you do, and especially going out in the communities. But thank you for your service.
I think, yes, I think you might have some questions.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Thank you, Sharon, and Greg. I appreciate you guys coming down with the presentation and giving us an idea of what we can do and which way we're going. At least now, we have a plan. And thank you, and Councilman Cobb, I appreciate it. You know, we're trying to get there. I have just a couple of questions about the surveys that are generated in multiple languages. Thank you for doing that. My primary question is, how are you going to disseminate those? How are they going out?
We're actually, we're actually using our community partners to make sure those surveys go, go out. We have our outreach efforts as well, community partners, church leaders, community influencers. So, we're, we're like the tree, they're the branches. So, this is a situation where it's going to take everyone, all hands on deck, right, to really collect the data, to make sure that you all have efficient information to make better decisions.
Okay, so they will be in paper form, electronic? I mean, they're going to be all kinds?
For those that want paper, we, we will make them available in paper form. It is going to be on a digital platform as well. I believe that we're using social media to, to get those surveys out as well in, in the targeted areas, so they will be available for the community.
Okay, and that was my second question. Who specifically would be our targeted audience? Who are you trying to target?
Well, we're targeting all of the communities our partners have suggested for us to target, as well as the communities that were also put in our scope as well.
Oh, okay, different particular areas?
Yes.
Well, yeah, it's primarily youth, middle school, high school youth, youth that are identified through Roanoke City Public Schools. So, that's, that's a big section of the youth, and we're working with RCPS to get that survey information out to the students and their families. The youth service providers have access to different networks of youth. But we know that also that lots of people have different relationships and different points of intersection with youth, who are either involved in gang activity or gang violence. And so, as many people that we can get this survey into the hands of, to get it into the, you know, to get those perspectives and lived experiences, the better. But we really want to prioritize youth.
We're also going to be reaching out to the community leaders. So, the survey, the residents in the communities will also get those surveys, the community leaders will get those surveys, gang members will, will get the surveys as well to give their input, youth serving agencies, and of course, the students and the education providers as well.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I was just wondering, because that's, that's a part of our, our struggle with, with anything, is getting the information out there. And it can be costly, too, if you're going to do paper, and this depends on how we're going to get it out there. But I appreciate that, and I appreciate you taking, putting it on your list also to meet with the, the schools and, and other church-based leaders and, and the community. So, thank you for, for everything that you guys are doing. But that was my only question. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Jeffrey?
First of all, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Just one question. I know you're doing an assessment, I just want to make sure I understand it clearly. Once you do the assessment, are you guys going to provide recommendations from the assessment, or is this just, you guys just compiling data and just going to present the data? Is it, is there, is there any recommendations after the assessment?
Yes, we'll have, the, the data that we collect, well, you'll, you'll be able to receive an after-action report, and that report will have an improvement planning process in that report for you to, to process as well.
Okay, so we will get, okay. I just want to make sure, I, I just want to make sure we didn't, okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Last Thursday, I had an opportunity to attend a webinar, which was the Community Violence Intervention, Addressing Gangs and Understanding Violence in Your Community. But before I say all that, but thank you for coming, and thank you, Joe, for having them come. In your community assessment, I guess because I watched this webinar, and I found some interesting things that were said, in your assessment, will you be also looking at police data?
Yes, ma'am. We will be looking at police data, as well as the hospitals' data. So, it's going to be a combination.
And in that police data, will you just be, will you be looking at criminal activities, such as the homicides, and all of them to try to zero in what predicts where gun violence is, based on the homicides or home invasions?
Yes, ma'am.
Those type of things?
We're going to be looking at all, all aspects of, of that data.
Okay. And also, do you, how do you all look at defining gangs? Or do you look at, let me answer that one first, and then I'll answer the other part to that? How do you all look at gangs? Because not all communities really have, quote, gangs than what's on, like, on the, I don't know enough to be dangerous, like on the West Coast, where you have the Crips, the whatever, whatever. Here, do we really have, quote, gangs such as that, or they just gang-related individuals who represent a, a community, a neighborhood, that want to be, quote, possessive of that particular area, and look at them as gangs?
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Through, through my experience, you know whether you are gangs or not, okay? Because they're going to make themselves known, okay? That's first and foremost. Once that's done, you identify those individuals, and then, as police bring them in, or whatever the case might be, or they run through your system or whatever, then they will go through a process, which is, I think the Department of Justice has a, a process they do to determine whether it's enough factors to put that person in a gang. They have information on gangs, and they list them accordingly, okay? We'll be looking at that information carefully, because one of the things we, we want to make sure is, we don't associate people who get in trouble
Right.
by being gang, just, and labeling them gang members, okay? We have some good youths out there that's been labeled, okay? We want to make sure that we know what those labels are. We're going to look at all that data, we're going to look at the dates of that data, whether it's outdated or whatever, and we want to look at the validation of that data. Who validated, why? You know what I'm saying? So, we're not just going to take face value, nothing. We're going to do it.
Right.
We are elite.
Right, okay. And you mentioned also by the hospitals, is that the same thing as when you have those that come in with gunshot wounds, or is that what you're looking at when you talk about the hospital data?
Yeah, we're going to be evaluating the hospital data, whether it's gunshot wounds, whether it's domestic, you know,
Domestic violence, whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you're doing an in-depth study for your assessment? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Andrew?
Thank you, ma'am. When you have the survey ready, is it possible to share, to share a copy with us, and especially in the different languages that they're going to be?
Yes, ma'am. So, the survey, we will be able to get the final comments and feedbacks from all of the providers by the six. And once we've gotten that feedback, we'll be able to evaluate the feedback that we receive, and then we'll be able to disseminate those surveys. And I will, if you give me your contact information, I'll make sure that you all get that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me say that during my years, up in the earlier years, we used to have a chief that would come before council, and he made the statement, they're not really gangs, they're wannabes. Well, every law enforcement person that I talked to and talked with us, from the feds on down, especially from the federal folk that do follow-up, and they have knowledge of the people that are operating, they declare them gangs, they're no wannabes anymore. They're gangs. I mean, they may not be as fully, they may not be as deep as it is in certain areas, like Crips and the Bloods, but I was personally advised that they're recruiting heavy in areas such as this. And so, and we have some problems, and I think you'll probably find that most of them, with the actions they're taking, and the people that look at it, and not only in this city, in several cities, in the Commonwealth, we declare them to be gang members. Not all, but they're gang members. And I think that's something that I didn't want to hear, but it seems like it's becoming more and more prevalent as time passes, because there's a heavy recruitment of youngsters, especially in the middle and high schools, that's, that's occurring. And so, I hope that that doesn't give cause of what you all are doing in terms of determining if they're a gang. I mean, there's some things that are happening that are very, very hot, and, but I think it's been made clear through law enforcement that we're dealing with gang issues here.
Absolutely.
Is there any more questions on, by members of council? Thank you guys for your report. Thank you, Ms. Moore, good to see you again.
Thank you.
And we hope things go well, and we'll be, we'll be staying tuned.
Yes, absolutely.
Get a wide screen, we're going to show you something.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. We're going to look on you to make sure we follow, but DCGS may change tomorrow, too, after things change. The whole script may be changed. It's been, it's been done before.
Right. I just sent you all the, the email that EBS sent out to the youth service providers that has the draft surveys on it, so you have a chance to review that and share it with anyone else you think could benefit.
Okay. Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, we're now down to the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. Do you have any citizens?
We do have citizens, but I would like to ask, Mayor, if I could introduce our new assistant in our, in our, in the Crips office.
Absolutely. I'm proud of this person that you're going to introduce.
Yes, sir. I'd like to introduce and welcome Krista Olson. Krista is our new administrative assistant in the city clerk's office. She recently relocated to the Roanoke region from Seattle, Washington, where she served as an administrative specialist at Harborview Medical Center, a Level One Trauma Center owned and operated by the King County Government. Krista comes to us with a wealth of administrative experience in public and private sectors, and is eager to begin assisting the mayor and the members of council. I'm very excited to have her, she's doing a great job, and we look forward to working with her.
Right.
I'm happy to be here.
You'll get me later.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, citizens.
Okay, we have two citizens signed up to speak. Our first person is David Coray.
David Coray.
All right.
Nobody gets it right, don't worry. Mr. Mayor, members of Roanoke City Council, my name is David Coray. I live at 3419 Ashmead Drive. I come here not to praise you, nor to necessarily criticize you, but merely to make a few statements of fact. First of all, your actions really have not been successful in preventing any killings in this city that I can see. We rival Chicago and Baltimore in killings per capita. You are sickened by this, as am I. But while you do not personally cause these killings, you have done little that has effectively prevented them. The gun, the no-gun zones and the gun buyback programs were not successful in preventing crime. You surely do not expect a criminal to turn in his guns. That will never happen, so we did not prevent any crime with this, in my opinion. So, you removed the Robert E. Lee statue. Did that cause one person to be better off? Did it educate one child? Did it make one neighborhood safer? Of course not. That statue was removed by people that were not as impressive a person as was Robert E. Lee. So, the Robert E. Lee statue is down and hidden, and not one person is better off. That's failure and a waste of money. You changed the name of a school. $400,000 of wasted money later has managed to accomplish not one good thing. You have a real talent for bending to the loudest protesters and not using logic in your actions. You can argue that you have affected change, but from the results, I say the change is not necessarily for the better. I, like everyone else, do have my ideas on how to turn this city around and make it better. Would my ideas work? We do not know, nor will we ever know, because they will never be implemented. But one thing for sure, your ideas right now are not working. If you keep doing the same things you have been doing, you will only have the same results you've been getting. History, hiding history, removing it, not discussing, means we do not learn from it, and then we have a city that heads downhill. Roanoke City has one of the highest crime rates of any size city in this country, at 25 per 1,000 residents. Is this in any way because of your attitude toward our police department? I understand our Roanoke City Police Department is at least 80 to 100 people short in personnel. This is not how you prevent crime, in my opinion. I want to state that I fully support every law enforcement officer in not just Roanoke City, but every department in this valley. Ladies and gentlemen, I will go no further at this point, but I do respectfully thank you for allowing me to voice my concern.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Dirk.
Dear Mayor and members of council and administrative staff, I don't want to live in a blue state. I don't want to live in a red state. I am Barbara Dirk. I live at 2607 Roslin Avenue. Blue and red make purple. And maybe that's why I wear purple so often, because I want us to connect. I encourage the Commonwealth of Virginia to be a welcoming place, just like the Roanoke City motto says. We are a welcoming place, and we, to, to live, work, play, visit, and raise a family. And that's what I'd like my Commonwealth to be, too. I have some shout-outs today. The first shout-out is that transit is free tomorrow. Hopefully, it's because, I don't know why it was, but I read about it in the Tribune, and tomorrow's election day, maybe it's they were giving free rides to the poll. But I'm encouraging people that talk about climate change to try transit. Alternative transportation is good for the climate. And if the, if you're a, a family, have a family, take the kids a ride on transit, or if you've never ridden transit, try it tomorrow and see what it's like. So, tomorrow, it's, transit is free. The other- The other thing is that plastic bags, you're talking about plastic bags, people that take alternative transportation, either walking or bicycling or taking the bus, it's very cumbersome to take those, those plastic bags that we buy at the store or we get free at the store. You need to have those small bags that fold up really, really small like this that you can hook, hook to, to your belt so you can, can put them on there and, and take them with you instead of those big plastic bags that they want you to. I'm thinking about the, the plastic bag tax that's coming in January. And then I'd like to especially give a shout-out to Councilwoman Bell Bess Pich who headed up the project that city council approved and, and of the Holton Plaza in honor of Governor Linwood Holton. He was a Mountain Valley Republican and he was instrumental in, in defeating the bird machine and integrating the schools, cleaning up environmental space and starting governor's schools to, to make education, higher education available to everyone. It's Opportunity Time, it's a memoir by Governor Linwood Holton. I would suggest that Roanoke City have a book club or have the library available to give, give away or check out. It's Opportunity Time because this talks about how you and I can work together to make this place a better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker?
No, we don't have any other speakers.
All right, thank you. That concludes the hearing of citizens upon public matters. We will now move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by members of council, city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. At this time, I also want to call attention to a walk-on item and I'll ask our city attorney to, to, to explain the item.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. This is a walk-on item to request a public hearing, which is required to receive citizen input to amend the city charter. This amendment would eliminate the provision in our city charter, Section 57A, clerks of court, and it would change the charter to eliminate that and the retention of fees collected by our, our clerk court, circuit court. And in exchange, we would allow and follow what the majority of cities in the Commonwealth do, and that is simply allow all of those fees to be transferred to the state and in kind, the state would then furnish and fund the cost of our circuit court clerk's office. So this is just to hold the public hearing and I'd ask the council to consider that and allow the public hearing to go forward.
All right, is that the only one here, Mr.?
That's the only one on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I need a motion to, for this amended consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda with the, I guess, the add-on.
Second.
All right, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the amended consent agenda has been approved. All right, a, we're now move down to the regular agenda item, which is a public hearing. We have none. Petitions and communications, there are none. And item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. I now will go to item 7A1, which is items recommended for action. The acceptance of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant from the United States Department of Justice to support programs within the Roanoke Police and Sheriff Departments. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, madam clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the FY 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program made to the city of Roanoke by the United States Department of Justice and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, is there any discussion or comments from members of council? All right, hearing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Now there's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
All right, madam clerk, would you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the federal government, Department of Justice, for the Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 grant fund appropriations and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion among members of council, any questions? Hearing no, seeing any, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item, item number two is the acceptance of trail access funds from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for the Roanoke River Blue Way Access at 13th Street Southeast Project. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, madam clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution accepting the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation Trail Access Grant Funds made to the city upon certain terms and conditions, accepting the donation of funds from the Roanoke River Blue Way Committee in accordance with Section 2-263 of the Code of the City of Roanoke, 1979, as amended, and authorizing the execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, is there any discussion or comments by members of council? I do not see any or hear anything, so madam clerk, please go ahead and, let me just say, I recognize Mr. Michael Clark here, who's our Director of Parks and Recreation here in the audience. But go ahead and read that, ma'am.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Madam, as a second.
Second.
All right, madam clerk, is there a, would you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the Virginia Recreational Trails Grant, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 capital projects and grant funds appropriations and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion or questions from members of council? Hearing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Mr. Clark, I hate for you to get by without asking something, but we'll catch you later. You're always a, you're a very valuable person to what we're doing in terms of conservation and recreation, all right. All right, item number four is the acceptance of Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program Fund from the Federal Emergency Management Agency in connection with the City of Roanoke Flood Plan Mitigation Project. There are, well, two resolutions and one budget ordinance. I need a motion on the first resolution.
Move the first resolution. Second.
All right, madam clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program Grant made to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management upon certain terms and conditions and authorizing the city manager to execute any required documentations on behalf of the city in order to accept the grants.
All right. Everybody clear on that? Any questions or comments from members of council?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for the city manager.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is only just for him to give some additional information with regards to this, I guess, to this grant. I see where it's, where the city will be acquiring and demolishing the Ramada property.
Correct.
Just a background and letting me expect to have this done.
Sure, so this grant actually, we made application for this actually over a year ago through FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Program. So these are funds that they make available, which we've been successful in securing for a number of years for repetitive flood-prone properties. So these are properties that flood frequently and often actually have claims, certainly that was the case here with the Ramada, there have been claims in the millions actually over the years from FEMA and through the insurance program. So this is a program that FEMA has established to remove that hazard from future flooding events and it's a partnership between the locality and FEMA. We made that application, again as I said, over a year ago to receive funds. We have received those funds, that's what this is to do, is to accept those, those funds. The funds we receive from FEMA will be matched by some of our own stormwater management funds as well to arrive at the total project, or the total dollars we have available for the project. So the next step in this process is actually now to successfully negotiate a purchase price for the Ramada. Just for clarity's sake, this is the office in the hotel itself, this is not the building that is behind the Ramada. It is not a flood-prone, or at least not a repetitive loss property, and so it's not eligible for this program, so it will only be the office and the hotel and of course the surrounding parking, all will be removed from, from the area except for one bridge, I believe it will remain, to access the property in the back. And, and really as far as timing, it will be greatly dependent on how long it takes to successfully negotiate the purchase price of the property. The property then will have to be abated in terms of removal of asbestos and any other hazardous materials and at that time then it will be demolished and then restored back into a natural condition as well.
The natural condition, what are the plans for the, what is the natural, I guess?
It'll, it'll actually be restored back to wetlands as it was naturally, because it is actually a flood, it is a, not only a flood plain, it's a floodway, so it's an area that really is intended to, to flood consistently. And so, it'll actually be restored back to, to its natural state.
Like green space?
Yeah, yeah, there, there won't be any kind of parking or anything associated with it. Again, with the exception of the access that's necessary to get to the back of the, of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
All right, any other comments or discussion from members of council? Hearing none, then madam clerk, please call the roll on the first resolution.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, now we're down to the second resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
All right, madam clerk, can you please call the roll? I mean, I'm sorry, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program Grant made to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management upon certain terms and conditions and authorizing the city manager to execute any required documentation on behalf of the city in order to accept the grants.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council?
I just have a question again, if I could, Mayor.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
And that is where I'm reading that this, these pieces of property that will be acquired, you're gonna convert them to open space and it'll just be open, just green space with nothing else?
That's correct. Under the, under the program, you all may remember, a month or so ago, we actually received the first increment for this year's funding with this and that was to acquire a number of other properties. The program requires that whatever property is, is ultimately purchased, be restored back to its natural condition. It can be used if it's an area that makes sense for recreational purposes. In this case, of course, the property is so small, there isn't really any other practical use other than the, again, the wetlands area, so it'll be returned to its natural state.
All right, is that it, Ms. Moon?
That's it, yes, sir, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the second resolution passes. We now have a, I need a motion for a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
All right, madam clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for pre-disaster mitigation grant for the City of Roanoke Flood Plane Mitigation Project to acquire and demolish the former Seabreeze Nursing Home property, which is prone to flooding, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 general fund appropriations and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, any discussion by members of council? Hearing none, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you all. Item four is the adoption of a repetitive loss area analysis as a requirement for the community rating system program in connection with the city food issue, insurance premium. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam clerk, could you read the title paragraph to the resolution?
A resolution adopting the Repetitive Loss Area Analysis Plan for communities with over 50 repetitive loss properties that have been, have not been mitigated and authorizing the city manager or his designee to take such action as may be needed to implement, administer such plan.
Mr. Mayor, if I may give just a little bit of kind of background on this one, this file, this file takes up a good chunk of your, of your packet here. So, kind of along the lines of the discussion we just had, of course, the city participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. That's what allows people in our community who are in a flood-prone area to actually purchase flood insurance. By being a part of that program, there are certain things we have to do. That's where our development regulations and zoning requirements come into play as to keeping, keeping things out of floodways, limiting developing the flood plain, having certain construction standards and so on. That's the basic, that's what's required in order to continue to participate in that program. Communities can also voluntarily enter into the community rating system or the CRS, which is what this is dealing with. By entering into the CRS, you actually increase the, the level of regulations as well as practices that you put in place to deal with flood properties, including the efforts at trying to actually remove flood-prone properties through the mitigation program that we just mentioned. By participating in that program, you're, you're rated, you get kind of a score and the, the better your score, the more residents and businesses save on their flood insurance. We are currently at a class seven in the program, which is a very strong rating within the program. And what that allows is folks to receive a 15% discount on their flood insurance premiums for properties that are actually in the flood hazard area and a 5% premium reduction for those that are not. Some people actually carry flood insurance even though they're not in an officially designated flood plain, which you certainly can do. The, that program has made a change in what is required to continue to maintain that level that we have and that new requirement is this repetitive loss area analysis. And in that, in the cover memo, it identifies six required steps that are necessary as a part of that plan or that analysis which is, is attached. a part of that plan, or that analysis which is attached. One of those is every property owner that has one of these properties has to be contacted. Other agencies have to be contacted as well that may have something to do with this. There is data collected, mitigation alternatives are considered, which could include, again, attempts at acquisition, voluntary acquisition of properties. There could be other mitigation measures taken. You document those findings, ultimately require approval by city council, and then there is an annual evaluation regarding that. All of those are the minimum steps necessary under this approach in order to maintain that rating that we have under that voluntary program, which, again, realizes savings for our commercial property and residential property owners in the area that happen to be both in flood-prone areas, but also those that are outside of flood-prone areas. So, that's what, that's what all of those pages that follow are intended and designed to do with this program.
All right. Any further discussion?
I just have one other follow-up question. Mr. Powell, I just have a follow-up question. When you're contacting the residents, what are we, what are we contacting them for? What are we asking? Or what are we, what are we?
Again, you want to talk? See, you have to bring in the real experts now at this point.
So, you've got the entire plan in your packet. In the appendices at the back, you'll actually have a copy of the letter that we sent out, as well as the survey. It should be at the very end.
Yeah, it's about two, we have two hundred and some pages, so we don't actually...
It would be around page eighty-three, eighty-four in that particular document. If that helps. No? Okay.
No, that's fine. That's fine. We'll find it. We'll find it eventually. Like I said, you know, we, there's a whole lot of pages in here. We have to...
Just some, some general basics about the floodplain, the NFIP, the community rating system, and then why they're being contacted, what repetitive loss means, and that we have asked them to, we did ask them to fill out a survey to further extend our knowledge before we began the repetitive loss area analysis, so that we could get public comment. We also had public comment on the very final plan that you have in front of you as well.
And that letter does also inform them of the discount that is currently a part of this program for their insurance. That's also a way in which they can check, ensure, basically, that they're receiving that discount that is authorized under the program as well. That's contained in that letter that goes to them as well.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Comments? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. And item five is the execution of Amendment Number Two to the contract between the City of Roanoke and Andrews Technology HSM Incorporated to replace outdated and mutual time clocks at the Public Works Service Center. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution authorizing the city manager's issuance and execution of Amendment Number Two to the city's contract with Andrews Technology HMS, Inc., to increase and license count and bring time tracking for all employees into one system, authorizing the city manager to take certain other actions in connection with such Amendment Number Two.
All right. Any questions or discussion among members of council? Seeing or hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes.
Mayor Lee, this is where we have that additional walk-on item. Resolution authorizing application, Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for the Community Flood Preparedness Fund Grant by the City of Roanoke Storm Water Division.
All right. Mr. Formo, can I have a, a motion?
Move the resolution. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph to that resolution?
A resolution authorizing the application to the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for the City Flood Preparedness Fund Grant by the City of Roanoke Storm Water Division, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right. Is it any more explanation?
Yeah, I'll give a little bit of explanation, since this is a walk-on item. So, the department actually recently created a new funding program, and that program is yet another way in which to address flooding issues within your community, and ways in which to really avoid those areas that are vulnerable, as well as preparing better for flooding events as you go forward. Ultimately, there's funds behind that. There is also, though, a requirement for the creation of a resiliency plan, which is the, kind of the entry plan that's required in order to ultimately pursue other funds out of that fund itself. So, this particular request is for funding that would allow us to prepare that resiliency plan. The application is due, I think, at the end of this week, I believe, which is why you're seeing it as well. The intent was to have it in your packet prior. That didn't happen. That's why you're having it as the walk-on, is because the application is due by the, by the end of the week. We are applying, as it says in there, we're applying for up to $150,000. It does require some match. That match will come out of our stormwater utility fund, much as the hazard mitigation programs we just talked about as well. Obviously, if we're successful in securing that, you'll hear more about the plan itself and the development and those types of things as we move forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Any other comments, questions? All right. Madam Clerk, call the roll on that resolution.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Now, I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments that you may have. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to go visit our eastern part of our state for a week or so. So, I appreciate that. So, thank you, and happy to be back. Few items, just to draw your attention to. One of those is, and this is, there's been a press release to this effect, and it's been out on our website as well, but I want to draw attention to it as well, which is the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services has provided some additional funding to our local health district, actually funding in the total, that totals about $2.3 million. The purpose of that funding is to ensure greater equity and access to COVID-19 vaccines, and forty percent of those funds will be distributed to community partners across the two health districts. If you remember, our health district actually consists of two, City of Roanoke, and then more or less the surrounding areas. For the City of Roanoke Health District, that's $221,000 that are available through this grant program. In response to that, the health district is seeking proposals from an array of organizations to support the goal of ensuring greater equity and access to COVID-19 vaccines. There is a request for proposals posted on the VDH website, as well as on the city's website homepage, along with the supporting information that's necessary for folks that may look to, to apply for that. So, it's a fairly open application. It's intended to generate as much interest as is possible and make those applications. If there are any questions after anyone views that information, it's best that they contact the local health district. They'll provide additional information associated with it. The staff here can put him in contact with them, but we don't, it's not our program. We're just trying to help promote, promote the program as well. But again, folks can visit the local VDH website and get more information regarding that. As you heard, Ms. Derrick mention about Valley Metro, I do want to make one clarification. Transit is not free. It still costs. Fares are free. So, the fares are free for folks on Election Day, which, which simply means that we're subsidizing the costs of ridership that day. And it is indeed in response to, as we have done, I think, now three years in a row, it is in response to Election Day as being fare-free. That is on all fixed routes, as well as Star Paratransit service. And as Barbara mentioned, it is also a good time, not only to use it to access the polls, but also if you have not previously ridden transit, it's a great opportunity to be able to do so without any additional cost to you as the, as the rider. If you have any questions about fare-free day, you can contact the Greater Roanoke Transit Company or Valley Metro at their, their phone number or at their, their website, and they can give you additional information regarding it as well. Also, if you haven't already noticed, you will the next few days, that leaves are falling off our trees, which means, of course, that it is time for our leaf collection program. Residents will begin receiving the postcard that we send out traditionally that shares with them more specific information about the bagged leaf collection. That will also be posted on the city's website, as well as on the Solid Waste Management webpage as well. The pickup will run through November and December, beginning the week of November fifteenth through eighteenth. So, that'll be the first week that you can start doing it. And, of course, the most important thing associated with our leaf pickup is that leaves must be placed in biodegradable paper leaf bags and set at the curb for pickup. If they're placed in any other container or located in any other location, they will not be picked up as well. There's no limit, so you can place as many of those at the curb as you, as you need to on the dates that are specified in there. And, of course, you all know, after those dates, if you attempt to dispose of those leaves, you need to place them in your trash can, that if they're set out at the curb after those dates, they will not be picked up by city work, city workforce. This is the window that we have for this program. Again, more information can be found on the website relative to that as well. As noted, tomorrow is Election Day. The city offices, though, will be open, as is normal. They will not affect our city services, nor will it affect the, the operations of Solid Waste, so that schedule works as it has always, will always work as well. And then finally, the, we had the Eureka Parks Fall Festival that had been scheduled for the twenty-ninth. It was actually postponed due to weather, and just want to remind everyone that that will actually be happening this Friday, November fifth, from 2:00 p.m. till 9:00 p.m. All the events are still the same as what was promoted previously, just had to be rescheduled as well. And again, that is at the Eureka Recreation Center on November fifth, this Friday, 2:00 till 9:00. And those are my, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Any...
I just have a follow-up question. Yeah, Mr. Powell, back to the leaf collection. Are you all going to ever consider the vacuum as opposed to the basket? Because some neighborhoods are very mature, like mine, and that, that bagging, it's just, that's a lot of leaves in those neighborhoods.
Yeah. I know I put out a lot of leaves on...
Yeah. I mean, some of the older neighborhoods, you're going to get that.
Yeah, I don't know. I'll check with Solid Waste as to whether there's ever been any discussion regarding the, the vacuuming and what is involved. And, I mean, obviously, a piece of equipment is involved, and that may be part of what has held back. I don't know. I'll find out the answer to that.
If you could. And just back to the repetitive loss analysis survey, I just want to go back to that.
Sure.
So, it, so it looks like it went out and may have gotten it back, or did you get any responses from that?
You mean, for those individual contacts?
Uh-huh. The contacts?
I don't know that we're necessarily looking for. Well, the surveys, we are looking for responses.
Yeah, clearly looking for...
Let me, let me find out, and I'll send that to you, what responsiveness they've had back from it. Because other than the survey, we're not really anticipating any responses back, but definitely the survey.
So, you just met your requirement by sending it out. You don't have to actually get anything.
Right. Although, the survey certainly helps us, so I'll certainly find out.
Oh, I was just wondering if you have to get some responses, or it's just meeting your requirement.
Yeah, our requirement is to get that information to them, and then it could collect the information that helps us refine what goes into those plans and stuff. And I'll, I'll find out what the response, return rate was on it.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
All right. All right. The next item is B1, Approval of a Proposed Settlement of Opioid-Related Claims Against Multiple Distributors and Their Related Corporate Entities. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution approving the city's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against McKesson, Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen, Jensen Pharmaceuticals, and their related corporate entities, and authorizing the city attorney and/or city's outside counsel to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in these settlements.
All right. All right. Any discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the resolution passes. Item number eight is reports of committees. We have none. Unfinished business, none. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions, none. Item number eleven is motion and miscellaneous business inquiries or comments by the mayor and members of city council. All right. Mr. Jeffrey?
Just real quick. I've had the opportunity since July to sit on the Strategic Committee for the School Board as they planned, the task force to plan their strategic planning. And I just wanted just to acknowledge the fact that they've done, want to acknowledge Superintendent Valletta White, and an extraordinary job they're doing, collecting about almost thirty community leaders in our, in our area, from different forms of industries and to, in community organizations, to talk about the importance and the vision of the school, the school, public school system. And I'm the city representative for council, and I just wanted to acknowledge the fact of the great work they're doing. Their strategic plan, it was initially supposed to be, I believe, in December, it's been moved to January, February now for the, to introduce the strategic planning. And they're really just, we really took this time to talk about collection of data from operations and budget practices and accountability measures, and also looked at what is the portrait of a graduate? What does, when a graduate from our high schools, what they actually look like, and what does that mean? And so, we received a lot of feedback. Student feedback has been positive, with students seeing this as a framework for change. And we've had focus groups that have been conducted during October with teachers, classified staff, parents, and principals, and high school students. The board would like to see more input from parents and students in this, as they're wrapping up a draft. And so, I just want to just acknowledge the great work, not just for the superintendent, but also the community leaders who decided to make an effort to really put education first in our community.
Thank you. Let me say that next Saturday, November thirteenth, is a big day for the City of Roanoke and Salem. We host the CIAA championship football game. We've done that for, this may be our seventh year. We missed last year. But as many of you may or may not know, that the CIAA is the oldest African-American intercollegiate conference in the country. And they're coming here for a championship football game, along with that, a probably close to a week of activities. The college teams come down to visit with our schools, the football players. It's a nationally covered football game, and I would like to see more of our citizens come out to support this. Both of the colleges, many of the colleges will have here, the two teams that are, will be playing have been the same for three years. I'm about to call it, those of you from Maryland, I'm about to call it the Bowie State Invitation, because Bowie State will be here again, along with Fayetteville, North Carolina, Fayetteville State. State. So they'll be going at each other next Saturday at the Salem Stadium over there, and it's always a good opportunity. They bring along with them educational opportunities. All of the schools come to talk to students about educational opportunities, and HBCU is historically black colleges and universities, and we have the oldest one in our city. And it took some work, and those of you that's been around in this know my part role in getting those there. I'm a graduate of an HBCU, and it's a very competitive opportunity that we took advantage of. I mean, Richmond, Charlotte, other cities competed for this game that we're bringing here, and I've always tried to get as many youth, not only from Roanoke, but from around the area, to come out to see not only a football game, but you see college students, cheerleaders, bands are there, students who are, who have matriculated there, there's a lot of local students in those schools. So this is an opportunity for us as a city and a community to show those that we're deserving of it, and I appreciate them being here, and it's a good day. I'm praying for good weather, but we're gonna have the tailgating, bands, all of the sororities and fraternities will be represented. And I'd like to also probably talk about a march of all the sororities will march at that time, because this is a showcase, because this is where a lot of the fraternities and organizations got their initiative. And I always tell students now, maybe a little different now, but especially the African-American students who have teachers, when they go to school, when they attend school, and ask their teachers, don't ask them where they get their graduate degrees, ask them where they get their undergraduate degrees. And many of them would tell you, for the most part, it was at an HBCU. And I think that's a, they have a tremendous heritage, we want to celebrate it. So I invite all of you that can, next Saturday at the Salem Stadium, we want to come out and support that, the commissioner and all of those people that are here. I think, I think Coca-Cola, I hope I'm right on Coca-Cola, but they're one of the big sponsors of the game, and we try to get as many passes in for our young people as possible, but still a revenue, a game of revenue for the colleges and universities. So we talk, and many in the community talk for HBCU, let's show out, let's show up to support these kinds of events, sporting events. We're gonna get sporting events in our city, especially a championship game, a Division II championship game. And Roanoke has contributed to that over the years, to making that possible, even though it's played at Salem Stadium, we do our part in contributing to that. So I want to ask you to attend the game next Saturday, right here in our backyard. And it's good football, and I think it's good fellowship, and for our young people, you see some tremendous things. Two great schools, and it's a great opportunity. So I encourage everybody who can to come out and to be a part of that activity. The CIAA, which is the Central Intercollegiate Athletic Association, will play their championship game here in Salem, and hopefully we'll be hearing more about that as we, as the week, next week begins.
Mr. Mayor, could you tell me what the time is, and how much is the tickets?
The time is gonna be announced, I would assume that it's gonna be, as in the past, around 2:00 p.m. And the tickets, that's a good question, but I think somewhere in years past, they've been anywhere from $15 to $10 or so for stu-, $7 for students. We missed last year, because they didn't even play football in those conferences last year, so I didn't get a piece. I'll be talking to Carrie Harbor Cutter over at Salem, who coordinated that, and I'll get that out to you all in time enough to make sure we know that. But it's a good activity, come out, tailgate, meet friends from all over the east coast. We got schools in Pennsylvania, Lincoln University, we got schools in Marlin, Bowie State University, we have schools in Virginia, Virginia Union University, who won't be here again. And they'll be here watching, but they won't be participating.
Your feelings are hurt there.
I did that to myself, I gotta tell it now. They won't be here as a participant. Virginia State University, which won't be participating as a team, but, and then we go down to North Carolina, and you've got Johnson C. Smith University, Fayetteville State University, and I know I'm gonna leave somebody out, but Shaw University in Raleigh, North Carolina, Wansau Salem State University in Wansau Salem, North Carolina, who will also be here watching. And Livingston College from Salisbury, North Carolina, they'll be watching, and those are all ones that's gonna be here, but they're gonna come and bring their fans, bring their cheerleaders, and we'll have a good time. And we're gonna have probably some events during that time, but it's a, it's a, it's a big event. I think you enjoy your time there, and I just hope, the only thing that could intervene, the last year that we had it here, which was 2019, it was so cold, it was cold and windy, but you know, we can't control the weather. But that's a very nice facility over at Salem, and it accommodates them well, and so there are step shows and tailgating everywhere, and everybody opens their arms, and again, I just like the fact that our band members in our high school band and cheerleaders can meet those college cheerleaders and see that, hey, because they're telling, we were once where you are, and I think it's a good thing, so come out and have a good time. Thank you so much, and I appreciate that. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, and maybe we can tag team on this, but I wanted to announce that next Tuesday, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, we're having our monthly meeting. It's gonna be a little different this month. We're gonna be at the Burgland Performing Arts Theater. I think we're gonna be in one of the wings of the lobby, but our meeting will start at 5:30, but then, beginning at 6:00, we'll host a community forum, which is gonna include an update on all of the efforts taking place in the city regarding gun violence prevention. That'll include some words from the mayor, some words from Chief Roman on law enforcement efforts, the reset team that goes out where there are incidents to provide support, an update on the commission work, introduction of our grant-funded staff. Bob's gonna give an update on the Star City Safe Initiative, and then an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act Gun Violence Intervention Initiative. And then we're gonna hear from citizens, groups, agencies that are, that have ideas on how we can expend some of those dedicated dollars that were prioritized through the citizens panel to help us do violence interruption work in the community. So that, again, the Gun Violence Provision Commission meeting will be from 5:30, will start at 5:30, but the community forum section of it will start at 6:00.
And I would anticipate, you know, maybe 20 minutes of the introductory remarks, just highlighting all of the different steps that are underway, and then shifting into receiving comments and thoughts from community members that may attend specifically on the ARPA funds that the advisory panel had recommended that you all endorsed, going toward gun violence prevention. There's somewhere around $2 million that we'll actually be using out of the Rescue Act dollars to advance on gun violence prevention, and that can range, as I've said in a number of cases, those ideas can range from targeted law enforcement activities all the way through to mini-grants. I mean, there's a full spectrum of what those options are of all of the different components we're already doing and have in place. Any one of those can be furthered or other ideas as well, so that's what the intent of that evening is as well. Thank you.
Mr. Cal, can I have a question? The next round of grants for that gun violence intervention, I know we spoke briefly about a particular person who's inquiring, when, do you know when that next round might be?
I don't, because that'll be up to the, it'll be up to the Gun Violence Prevention Commission if there is another round.
If there is, right, that's what I'm asking, is it over, or is it, is there a potential for another round?
Yeah, I think that's, that's one of our priorities, certainly, is to do another round of those, but we'll have to just figure out, based on what we hear next week, and so it's partly that, it's partly, you know, the Gun Violence Intervention Program Grant that we received from the state. There was some money designated toward the initiatives in that, but not enough to really
Push it out as far as...
Make those as expansive as they could be, so there may be some dollars that are dedicated toward those initiatives. But it's my hope, certainly, and I think the commission would, would support this, is to see, over the next several years, additional rounds of those mini-grants, maybe even funding them on a little larger scale than we were able to this last time.
Or some new ones, some that missed out, because I know that one in particular that I think we wanted to help, we missed, he missed it.
Yeah.
Councilman Carr, what's the date of the year?
November 9th.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, a week from tomorrow.
And I think it would be, it would be real, I think it would be a real good opportunity for all of us to come, if we can, to show that we're behind the work that's been going on with the Gun Violence Committee, and we support that, and hear from the citizens about their thoughts on gun violence and where we are.
So our meeting starts at 5:30, the community forum starts at 6:00.
Tim, do we want, do we want, if we anticipate a quorum of council members attending, do we want to, we can certainly post that there may be?
We can post the notice in the way that we have previously, that would allow...
Yeah, it would allow you all to be there, obviously.
Not to participate, but to be there and observe.
Okay.
Right, we tweaked our notice to better put council in a position to attend and observe this type of meeting without creating a council meeting, but if you start participating, all of a sudden, we can evolve over into that.
Yeah, and we have time to do that, so we can definitely make that happen.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Who, oh, Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you. It's our ongoing topic, one of our favorite topics we'd like to talk about is the homeless. And I just have a question, the property that's located on Valley View, as you go over, fly over the residue piece of property going toward the airport, up against the fence, I don't know if it's private property or if that's city-owned or the VDOT.
Are you talking about the property that is...
The open space, the open space on your right.
Behind the Lowe's area, where we've had issues, yeah, there's, it's a combination of both city-owned property as well as private property, so behind the fence in that detention area is privately owned.
Right.
On the other side of the fence is city-owned, is not VDOT-owned, and that, we've actually been able to remove encampments there twice as well, so if folks are back, we'll send folks.
They're back. They're back, and, and it's just the litter, the trash that they're leaving there as they make their home.
Yeah, that's, that is still considered right-of-way, which allows us to be able to remove, because it's actually technically part of the road system, and that's how we're gonna do that.
Well, this is up against the fence of where the property, I guess, we're talking about the same area.
As long as on our side, on the roadside.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right, we will, we will address that.
Because I do wish to thank the Hat Team for their efforts in helping those that have been on the streets, you know, with their signs, and I've noticed a decrease in that area whereby there was concerns.
The Hat Team has helped get a number of those folks into housing, but those that we were not successful in, in that location, were removed from that property, so we'll take a look at it again.
And my last one is, today I noticed, when I left out of here around 1:00, one of the Valley Metro buses bypassed a stop sign where a homeless gentleman was standing. He even, it was at the traffic signal intersection, and he even tried to stop the bus, but the bus kept going. And it so happens, I knew the gentleman, and I gave him a ride over to Third Lane, to the hotel where the city has helped to pay for them to stay, and I asked a question amongst some others, and they said that is a thing that is an ongoing event with the bus drivers, they will pass them by without stopping to allow them to get on the bus.
Were they at a designated bus stop?
Yes, it was a designated, in fact, it was Salem and Second Street. So it was a designated, because I looked to see, and he had been standing there, because I was coming through the signal intersection at Campbell, and he was standing at the bus stop, and the bus, first bus was not the one he wanted to catch, it was the second one, and he proceeded on through the intersection as well.
If it was at a designated bus stop, we'll have, I'll have Brent follow up.
Yes, I wish you would, because he said it's not the first time that it has happened to him, it happens often, and so, and he said, along with others from the, you know, the homeless population who's standing at the bus stops, that they're always, tend to be passed by.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Councilman Jeffrey?
Bob, real quick, the plastic bag tax is gonna start in January, are we on track as far as notification, marketing, and all that?
We are, I've had it in maybe, it was maybe two updates ago, I included some information in, at this one coming up Friday, I'll have some additional information, but we have already prepared, and I believe already have distributed, the letters to the retailers. Bag distribution is, already has started, and it'll ramp up as we go further, but I'll have some additional information I can include in the update of where we are.
Any initial response from the grocers or anything?
Not yet, but I'm certain that we will get some.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Okay, vacancies on certain authoritative boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council?
Mr. Cal?
All right, I will refer to Councilman Carr. Oh, I need, we need to, okay, we're gonna come out of motion, come out of, close meeting first?
You want me to do that?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we can do this, and then we certify the closed meeting at the end.
Okay. All right, then, I'll ask for your calls.
So, the following appointments, the Roanoke Cultural Endowment Board of Directors, reappointing Sherman P. Lee Jr. for a new three-year term. For the Roanoke Valley Greenway Commission, appointing William M. Hackworth for the unexpired term ending June 30th, 2022, and Stephanie LaRue to fill the unexpired term ending June 30th, 2023. For the Towing Advisory Board, Andrew Pulli for a three-year term, and Jada Smith, reappointed for a three-year term. And for the Youth Services Citizen Board, to fulfill the student appointment, Remy Davies for a one-year term.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, roll on that, and all those who are in agreement, please note by saying all appointee, all nominees, I'm sorry.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
All nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
All nominees.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
All nominees.
Mr. Best Pitch? I'm sorry, Mr. Cobb?
All nominees.
Mr. Jeffrey?
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee?
All nominees. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Cobb, and now we'll entertain the motion to certification close, close meeting, come out of closed meeting.
I move with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by members of council in attendance.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please follow up?
Give me a second.
We got a second, second.
Ms. Moon Reynolds? Yes, Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and all nominees, thank you. There apparently being no further business, set forth to come before this council.
Understand we need a change to item 7A5. There's a change to that resolution, do you have that? If you could bring that out, we do need to change that motion to amend so that we don't have to bring it back at a later date, Mr. Mayor.
7A5?
Yes, this is the execution of amendment number two, apparently. Apparently, I'm told that there is a change that needs to go on that.
I move to amend the resolution at five, I mean, 7A5.
It'll be 7A5.
Yes.
Second.
All right.
We're waiting on the resolution.
If we could wait on it, so you can see exactly what the change is.
Move it.
And I apologize, Mr. Mayor, for this. Mayor, just to break some of the silence, I'll be glad to talk a little bit about the settlements that were approved.
Yes, sir.
Approximately $203 million will be coming from these settlements to the Commonwealth of Virginia, with about $3.5 million, or a little 3.7 million, coming to the city of Roanoke. Now, this is anticipated to be not even quite half of what is anticipated from these settlements. Think that it might help citizens to know that this money, there's a fund to pay for attorney's fees. So this money, if it goes through the way that we hope it will, will come directly to the city. That's the direct payment to the city. Also, the opioid abatement authority will actually handle 55% of all revenues collected, and that'll be dispersed to localities for special projects, with regional projects being given special consideration. So as we go through this process, even though that we're anticipating between $8 and $9 million directly to the city of Roanoke, understand more than that will come to the city through these special grants and the opioid abatement authority.
Okay.
And that will benefit and address some of the needs that we've encountered as a resort, resort of the opioid epidemic.
That's great. So what project we got out there, Ms. Cobb?
Oh, well.
I'm just being facetious.
We've got the projects, because we, we actually, remember, we're using some of our ARPA funding, actually, to fund the administration for the collective response, what they will be doing. We will use some of these funds that Mr. Spencer's talked about to actually offset some of our costs with fire EMS, to respond to the types of calls that are resulting from, from these incidents. And we will likely use some of those sources of funding for the sustained source of funding for the collective response, be able to implement on their blueprints. So a lot more to come. A lot of it will be depending on how much those settlements end up actually being in the end.
All right, thank you. I was just being facetious with that.
And if I can, I have the change, change in this one. It is an important change. It changed the actual amount of the additional increase of the cost from $359,025 to $365,225. That is sole change, but it is an amount, I only have the one copy. But if you look at the original, you have your package from basically $359,025 to that $365,025 number.
Do we need to put that in the motion, or are we all right, right, well?
I was gonna say, I can put it back into the motion, if that's okay.
If you would, I think that will create a great record.
Okay. I move that we amend the resolution at 7A5 for the amendment to shall, shall provide authorization for additions to the work with an increase in the amount of the contract, and provide that the total amount of such amendment number two will not exceed $365,225.
Okay, second.
Second.
Second. All right.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, can you read the paragraph?
Yes, sir.
Change in that?
A resolution authorizing the city manager's issuance and execution of amendment number two to the city's contract with Andrews Technology HMS, Inc., to increase the license count and bring time tracking for all employees into one system, and authorizing the city manager to take certain other actions and connections with amendment number two.
All right.
And Mr. Mayor, I just want to appreciate, thank the city manager's office specifically, our deputy city manager, Clarence Greer, as well as the folks in our Department of Technology in moving this forward. This is an issue that I think many council members might recall, dealing with these electronic time clocks. They really, Ms. Greer really put this on the front burner to move this matter forward, and I am personally appreciative of his effort.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Greer, and thank you all for the work you've done on this. Now, are we ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and call a roll, ma'am.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice, Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the amendment, motion, resolution passes. Okay. There being no further business set forth to come before the council, this regular session of Roanoke City Council is hereby adjourned.